It is 9:05 on October 29th. City Clerk, will you engage in roll call?
Councilmember Brettafield. Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Sparza.
Present.
Councilmember Karbasi.
Here.
Councilmember Soria.
Here.
Council Vice President Capriolio.
Here.
And President Arias.
Present. Let the record show Councilmember Chavez and Nelson or Sparza are joined us via Zoom online, and everything's working. Councilmember Karbasi, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance? Thank you, Councilmember. City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have one change to the agenda. It's Item 1A, Actions Pertaining to the CARES Act's Emergency Solutions Grant Round Two, Funding from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The resolution does not require five affirmative votes. That's the only change I have.
Thank you, City Clerk. Councilmembers, do you have any changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
All right, there's no changes, so we'll get to... There's a motion to approve the agenda, seconded by Councilwoman Soria. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brettafield.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza.
Aye.
Councilmember Karbasi.
Yes.
Councilmember Soria.
Yes.
Council Vice President Capriolio.
Yes.
And President Arias.
Yes. All right, Council, now we'll get on to consent. Is there any items that Council would like to pull from the consent calendar? Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes, I'd like to pull Item 1D, and I also need to recuse myself for 1B and 1C.
Okay. So, City Clerk, let the record show that Councilmember Brettafield is recusing himself from 1B as in boy, 1C as in cat, and he'd like to pull 1D for separate discussion. Any other changes to the agenda, consent? Councilmember Karbasi?
Please pull 1E as in Edward.
Okay. Let the record show that 1E is being pulled for separate discussion. All right, are there any other changes? Do you have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar?
So moved.
I'll second it. Let me go to the public. Is there anybody in the public wishing to address the consent calendar as amended? We have two members of the public. Brandy, you have the floor.
Brandy, you're unmuted.
All right, let's move on to Lisa Flores.
Sorry, I'm sorry about that. I jumped straight to my notes and didn't realize that, sorry. I wanted to thank you so much for the efforts going into housing for our... those in our community that are without housing, and for the efforts that have gone into this, including the staff. I want to ask, in this, I know that these are not the things being voted on, but do you want to speak up and ask that when you guys are considering the items like in 1A regarding providing permanent housing, seeking permanent housing for those who are currently sheltered, that add, as well as the seeking housing through the home key, that you... that this includes, that they ensure, that staff ensures that there are, there is wraparound services for each of the people that they're seeking housing for. A lot of people, you know, that we've had issues with success because people are given vouchers and need extra additional services, you know, ensuring that they have, that they have a job, that they have other things that they need to be successful, and I ask that the city, the council advise the city to ensure that, that with seeking housing or building housing, that there are sufficient wraparound services, such as those that are being provided at the villages, that the housing development on Blackstone and Dakota that will have onsite wraparound services. I also again ask that you, that in looking for places that, wherever possible, it could be within the, within neighborhoods and cities, so that people can be part of the community. But I, again, thank you guys for this and ask that...
Thank you, Brandy.
Yeah, I have, thank you.
Next person is Lisa Flores. Lisa, you have the floor.
Oh, just real quick, it's not about anything of the items on the agenda at the moment. It's when you guys pull things, or you say Item 1A, could you please give me like a little title, because I don't have an agenda, and for me to look at an agenda, I would have to drop out of your meeting and look it up online and then get back in, and it would just make it so much easier for me and those listening at home, what I, what are the titles of the items? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for the suggestion, and with that, the items that were pulled for separate discussion are 1D as in dog, and repeal the money-back guarantee, and 1N as in Edward, which is the potential execution of a contract for the community centers. With that, Council, will you please do roll call to approve the consent calendar as amended?
Councilmember Brettafield.
Yes. And you have my recusals.
Yes, I can. Councilmember Chavez.
You're muted, Councilmember.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza.
Aye.
Councilmember Karbasi.
Aye.
Councilmember Soria. Council Vice President Capriolio.
Yes.
And President Arias.
Yes. All right, Council, that is the consent. Before H. and our Director President from Housing Authority depart, I do want to say thank you for the amount of work that you guys have done in fulfilling the commitments for us to clean up, you know, the city's historical red light district that's become a magnet for drug trafficking and human trafficking. The purchase and renovation and revitalization of multiple motels in that corridor is going to change lives for generations to come. So, thank you all, and the work has just begun. Thank you. All right, Council, now we'll hear the two items that were pulled separately. We'll start with 1D as in David, the money-back guarantee repeal. Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes. First, I want to say I'm glad to be addressing this today and to discuss and review this in an open, upfront manner, rather than what it took place last Thursday, which was deceptive and not transparent. Last Thursday, it wasn't even noticed properly. There was a motion, 34, motion to reallocate $250,000 for the money-back guarantee program to fund a grocery store incentive. That was the motion, and then I had to leave because we were supposed to stop at 12, but the meeting went forward. I asked the Council President about his motion. It was his motion. He said it was, quote, "No big deal, just want to help grocery stores." Well, it became something else where it was a rescission, rescind money-back guarantee, and, you know, I have a problem with that because it wasn't noticed properly, and then the Council took a vote rather than saying, "Wait, we need to discuss this," and yet many of my same colleagues request the same thoughtful consideration and requests when their projects come before the Council, and rightfully so. So I, along with the citizens of Fresno, along with many city staff, and private businesses, and developers, and businessmen and women, weren't given the consideration, the opportunity to discuss money-back guarantee being rescinded. So, lots of staff, people worked, spent months, perhaps hundreds of hours, working to implement this program. No one was contacted to discuss this, and so I'm glad that, even though it moved forward, it had to come back today because it's an ordinance. So, what is money-back guarantee? What's the history behind it? Well, this started as a discussion two and a half, three years ago because of intense frustration from the private sector and businesses and developers in terms of dealing with City Hall and dealing with the businesses of, dealing, doing business with the city. And this is nothing new. This has been going on for many decades, many administrations. There's not any particular administration or anybody. This has been an ongoing problem. So, we met with businesses and tried to address whatever they felt was going on and why the culture at City Hall appeared to be anti-business. It's been clear for a long time that people expressed the feeling that doing business in neighboring cities, Clovis, Madera, Visalia, others, it's much easier to do business. John Brelford, who's an industrial developer, that means jobs when you create industrial buildings, has done building all over California, says over and over how difficult it has been for him through the years to do business in the city of Fresno. So we began extensive meetings some two and a half, three years ago, and that included myself, Councilmember Chavez, and then Councilmember Steve Brandow. We met with people like John Brelford, and Darius Saseemi, and Duane Zinkin, and Josh Peterson, and John Bonadelli, and the Building Industry Association, and Dennis Gabe, and private business, and real estate people, and private citizens. The meetings also included, at some point, the mayor, the city manager, staff from planning, Public Works, Public Utilities. We got feedback from the Fire Department, numerous other departments. We had long, extensive meetings, reviews on fees, permitting fees, plan check process, EIRs, looked at the process of doing business for our constituents and businesses from start to finish. The process was challenging, at times contentious, collaborative, and exhaustive. There's much resistance to change in bureaucracies. After months and months of work, negotiations and collaborations, we finally worked out an agreement and brought the money-back guarantee before the City Council, and it was subsequently adopted on May 1st, 2019. Now, what is the money-back guarantee? And by the way, it was adopted unanimously with everyone on this council, I believe, except I don't know that Councilmember Karbasi was here, was with Councilmember Brandow, now Supervisor Brandow. And I think everyone knows, it was unanimous, that this has been an ongoing problem for decades. And the money-back guarantee is not a designated money-making operation. In fact, nobody wanted to make money on it. It was designed to set up where if permitting plans were not met in a timely manner, in a manner set up with the timelines set by city staff, those fees could be refunded back to prospective businesses and business people and developers. No one wanted to return money for not meeting timelines. It was designed to ensure timelines and other metrics for businesses were met. It was designed to make us competitive with other cities, known for doing, being business-friendly and user-friendly, which we have not been for decades. It was designed to let prospective businesses know that we guarantee their projects will be done in a timely manner. We guaranteed it. So it was designed to attract businesses from a public marketing perspective. Now, in reading the effort by the sponsor of this, Council President Miguel Arias, he stated in a recent GV article that the money-back guarantee, quote, "program exempted government projects that led to delays for such projects as the BMX bike track at Mary Ella Brown Community Center." He then added, quote, "They're being put at the bottom of the pile for processing so that the staff can focus on the private sector submission." So that's an indicting statement, and I'd like to know from city staff, is that true? And maybe Jennifer Clark can come in?
No, it's not true, and I have a Director Clark here if you have specific questions of her.
Well, I have a question. I'd like her to be on the record. Is that true, Jennifer Clark, or not? Because that's an indicting statement of your city staff and your department.
Director, welcome to the council meeting. You have the floor.
Thank you, Jennifer Clark, Director of Development and Resource Management. I have conferred with Public Works Director and with my team. All applications are processed in the order in which they are received, regardless of whether they are publicly sponsored or not, and they are not tracked separately.
Okay. And while you're here, money-back guarantee, you were obviously very resistant to it initially, as you said, when we talked on the phone the other day, you just definitely didn't support it. And clearly, there have been some difficulties. I'm going to say what some of the private sector has told me and some of the difficulties, but what's been your impression, what's positive, what's negative about the money-back guarantee?
Jennifer? So, it has, you know, the Permit Streamlining Act, and it was intended to give assurances to our customers that their projects would be completed in a timely manner. And I think, you know, that has always been our goal, and we have continued to work toward that. I think that the, having the Permit Streamlining Act, whether or not there was a money-back guarantee or not, has provided assurance to our applicants that, given a complete application, that they would have a date that they would know that it would be completed by.
Okay. And you also indicated that, as a result of this, the applications that you got were filled out more accurately, more timely, which helped you as well. Is that fair?
That would be a fair statement, yes.
Okay. Was any money ever given back?
No, there have been no funds repaid from this program.
Okay. And why is that?
During the, during the program, until there was a, I can't think of the right word, but there was a waiver of the money-back guarantee during COVID, so when we were under an executive order, we did not track those, but until that point, 100% of the applications were completed within the timeline specified in the ordinance.
Okay. All right, I appreciate it, Jennifer. Did you want to say anything? No. So the last meeting that we had was February 19th, and we had that meeting because I was also hearing from the private sector that there were problems with money-back guarantee. They were feeling that the bureaucracy, in some sense, was gaming the system a little bit, and so it was making it even more difficult for them, and that's what they expressed to me, quite honestly. And at the meeting, they expressed that the city staff, and by the way, they were, you may recall the meeting, it was heavily attended, lots of staff, a lot of business people, developers. They said the city staff had used the program to take the longest amount of time allowable. They felt it was disingenuous. Anything to slow the process down or create a roadblock, the Planning and Development Department was doing. Communications from Planning and Building Departments needed to be improved. There was a lack of communication, a missing communication was a huge issue. The new development code that started in January of 2020 was an issue, and managing the applications and preparing for the changes with the new code was not planned accordingly. Applications were backlog. The city needed additional staff to be cross-trained. They felt the employees needed a can-do attitude. Acela had lots of issues, I think we all know that, and was not functioning well. It would not tell you when your project was accepted or approved, would not notify you when your project was within the system. The system lacked credibility. Some projects were assigned to phantom staff that didn't exist, took time to figure out what the problem was. The amount of the storage in the system to upload documents was an everyday issue. Chuck Clark, Building Services Manager, was working on these issues and ways to make the Acela system better. Jennifer, I hate to bring you back up, but I'm just wondering if you could comment on those criticisms? I believe you were there. What's been done to improve that, and if those, you disagree with those criticisms? And again, those were the direct result of a meeting in February as we were trying to address money-back guarantee program and making it work better.
Yes, good morning. So, those complaints or those concerns were raised at that meeting, and Charles Clark, Chuck, is our new building manager. He's been here about a year, and he really grabbed all of that and looked at it and said, "How can we better utilize our system?" Because again, Acela or any other HTE, a card catalog is only as good as the input that's in there and the ability to access the information. So, he worked really hard with staff. They've provided and uploaded videos online for training on how to utilize the system. We have increased our notification of our customers on status in the system, and we have, are continuously attempting to improve. And I think it's something that is really important to state, that as the Planning Department, we collect input from a lot of different sources. So, our team is not the only one who's involved in the review system. There are other departments, there are outside agencies. So we are the source, and we tend to be kind of the focus of what's wrong, right?
Yep.
And so, our team has worked really hard with our partner agencies and our partner departments to ensure that they are being responsive as well and that they are meeting their anticipated timelines, because again, we would like, whether it's a public investment or a private investment, for investment to occur in Fresno, and we want to make sure that our customer knows what the expectations are.
Okay, and I appreciate that, and you're absolutely right. You often get the focus, but there's a lot of departments that have, are part of this and sometimes holding things back up. Appreciate that. I just want to finish with an email from one of the attendants who I respect, who was at that meeting, and I know the mayor was at the meeting as well, and his, what he indicated was that, and I'm going to, I won't use his name, he says, "My records indicate you, Nicole, Building Industry Representatives, met with city staff members on February 19th to discuss the then continuing delays the industry was experiencing in obtaining timely processing of applications for building and other permits and plan approvals by DARM, now the Planning and Development Department and the Public Works Department. Building official Chuck Clark acknowledged certain delays and offered to meet with Building Industry Representatives with the goal of improving application processing times and resolving deficiencies in the Acela Faster Program. As I recall, city staff members committed to provide periodic reports of the status of application processing times. However, insofar as I am aware, subsequent reporting did not occur in any formal manner." But I want to acknowledge some very positive things, and this is what he says. "During the following weeks amongst Chuck Clark made a concerted effort to address the industry's concern. Were it not for Chuck Clark and Will Tackett, there would have been no improvement whatsoever in the city's application processing timelines." So while there's criticism, criticism a lot, I want to acknowledge there are stars and people who really care. Although the effort proved successful on a number of fronts, progress slowed with the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. When City Hall was close to the public, and many city staff members began working from home, progress ground to a hall. Today, it's virtually impossible to reach staff members working from home by telephone, and it is far too easy for them to ignore email messages when they choose to do so. Although far from perfect, at the present time, the processing of applications for permits and entitlements through the Planning and Development Department is much improved compared to the conditions that existed in late 2019." So, while I suspect this will be rescinded as opposed to improved, this money-back guarantee program, which is what really should happen, the process should continue. It was continuing in February, COVID delayed it, and we will continue to make progress. So I would suggest to the Council that this is unwise to just rescind a program that has received a lot of support from a lot of people, and while there are certainly problems with it and within the system and the bureaucracy, and the bureaucracy is hard to change, and I've said all along that you have to change the bureaucracy and the culture, and that this has been an ongoing problem for decades, far surpassing any one particular administration, this has been the direction we've needed to go. And just rescinding a program, while may feel good today, does not solve anything, it doesn't solve any problem at all. The problems still exist. They will exist after you rescind money-back guarantee, and what you will have done is basically stopped the momentum and the progress that was taking place until we weren't able to have more meetings to address this, because we were supposed to have meetings following our February 19th to address all of the concerns that have been expressed by the private sector and the development industry. So I'm not going to support this. I'm glad it's being done out in the open today as opposed to the duplicitive, deceptive way it was done last week, and I won't be supporting rescinding this.
Thank you, Councilmember. Make a motion to approve the item. It's seconded by Member Karbasi. We'll go to Councilmember Chavez. Before we go, actually, if you would allow me, let me go to the public first. Anybody in the public wishing to speak to this item before I go to the Councilmember? Lisa Flores, you have the floor. And then we'll return to Councilmember Chavez.
Good morning. As a retired planner, I agree with rescinding this motion. It seems like it has some problems, and the Councilmember does have eight months to basically retool, rework it, figure out what the problems are, fix the problem, and he can come back next year at a budget proposal and propose this once again. Money-back guarantees, no. The one thing I did not hear in his presentation were, was, "What about environmental justice? What about the historical land use racism system that the city of Fresno has had for decades? And how do you improve that?" Because, you know, when you put industry, industrial facilities in poor people's neighborhood, they get sick. So, you know, I'm just against this, you know, just pull it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, Councilmember Chavez, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. I worked with Councilmember Brettafield on this item last year, early last year, and we went through this conversation. I've been in that building now for about 10 years, and everybody that's come before us has wanted to fix the system, whether it was the navigation process back in the early 2010s, whether it was the pipes program that we went through, or other initiatives that have come and gone. And what has been missing has been a true conversation of sitting down with all the department heads that touch every single project that comes through and really hones in, hones in on what is actually the glut in the system, right? Because we could sit here and blame the bureaucracy and blame staff members, but as that's been explained to me, and I've had these conversations with staff members in the building, they're only responsible for a certain aspect of the process. And, you know, I'm always willing to try new things. I was willing to try this. I've spoke to people that have gone through the system. It hasn't yielded the results that we want. I totally understand that. My only concern with rescinding this, and this is why I want to make sure that staff understands that we're not removing the accountability system if this gets rescinded, because I have over 18 projects that I need to get approved within the span of about three months here, and understanding that we're in the middle of a transition with, you know, our outgoing mayor and then the new incoming mayor. So, what I want to make sure, and if it's the will of the Council to rescind, I totally get it. I understand, we try things, they work or they don't work, and, you know, it's on its merits. I mean, I think we just heard our planning director walk us through what some of the challenges have been. I've actually spoken the last couple of days with folks that have projects, not just in my district but across the city, and there needs to be a real comprehensive analysis, a total system analysis of what is actually the problem. I'm sure we'll have that conversation later at some point, but I think for me, what I want assurances, and maybe this is something that Jennifer can address or somebody from the administration, so with us rescinding this, what exactly does that do for staff and their workload?
Jennifer, would you like to come to the podium? Councilmember, can you repeat your question for her?
Yeah, with, if the Council decides to rescind this, what accountability measure or what, how does this change the workload that our staff members are doing? So, if maybe Jennifer can explain, you know, what that would look like for implementation on her end.
So, Councilmember, I appreciate the clarification of the question. Our workload will not change, so the same number of applications are still coming in. We will still be tracking them. We will still have expectations of timeliness by our staff. We will continue to track those metrics. You know, I would state that we started tracking metrics in 2014. You know, I would state that we started tracking metrics in 2014. And at that time, we were processing about half the number of applications that we are processing today with about a third fewer staff. And we were hitting our timelines, same timelines that we're talking about today, 30% to 60% of the time. When we started money-back guarantee, we were still tracking those timelines. We were hitting those timelines about 60% to 85% of the time. We have an expectation for our team and we track them. And whether or not it's a money-back guarantee or some other expectation for the team, you know, I think having that deadline and saying, hey, this is when we're going to get something done, being able to go to 100%, we did lose a little bit of time. But since money-back guarantee, about 35,000 applications have been processed through the system and less than 450 were overdue, which is about 1.3%. And that was simply during COVID. So whether or not there's money-back guarantee, I think Councilmember Chavez's point is well taken. We don't need a name for it. I think just tracking and being able to acknowledge that staff is working very, very hard with a significant increase in project level to hit those deadlines. So it is my commitment that we would continue to do that.
Just as a follow-up to that question, and I'm glad you clarified that, one of the challenges that we've had in speaking with people that have put projects forward has been that the time clock that starts is essentially not, it does not commence until all the documentation is submitted. Do those applicants get like a cheat sheet beforehand on what is required for them to initiate that time clock?
That's a really great question. Yes, there are a number of worksheets online that provide, depending on the type of application, all of the documents that are required and then links for, here's where you can get those documents, so that you're prepared and you're able to upload the entirety of the application. And it does dramatically improve processing times.
All right. Those are the questions that I have. And again, I just want to put it on the record, I have 18 projects that I have going on in my district. Regardless of what happens today, I want that accountability measure to be there. And I think especially with the pandemic, what that has shown us is that the economy is slowing down, and I think it's going to be more competitive early next year. And I've spoken to the incoming administration, they have some plans along those lines. And, you know, I'm happy to continue to keep having the conversation. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Councilmember Carvasi.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. President. So, you know, Councilmember Chavez was kind of going down the same route I was going. I think it's important to keep our eye on the ball. We have a lot of projects that are important to us, that create jobs, that increase the housing supply, which reduces the cost of housing. And we definitely want to keep the momentum. When there's a strong economy, we have to ride that wave. So anything we can do to break down bureaucratic hurdles is important. Before I start, I just wanted to say, there are certain words people have been hearing the last couple of weeks of this council, words like corruption, words like deceptive. And my issue with that, as one of the seven council members, is these are words that are only opinion. And that's really, really counterproductive. Like, I've been on the losing end of bills, and I suspect if money-back guarantee came to me when I was on the council, I'd be the one council member to vote no, and I'm going to outline why. But we can't use this incendiary language. Unfortunately, it creates a scenario where people lose confidence in their government in the middle of a pandemic, when it's just a matter of opinion and not fact. And I'm glad we're out here in the open, so no one can accuse us of being deceptive or corrupt or swamp rats. So we are still, to this day, well over a year after money-back guarantee's been in effect, talking about the challenges getting good projects through the city. So that tells me money-back guarantee hasn't worked. Now, we can blame whatever reason we want, and I understand, it's really difficult. I think it was actually very well-intentioned. But like a lot of big bureaucratic bills that make a good press conference, it's all bark and no bite. What I've heard from the same people mentioned earlier, all those people mentioned the developers, the people that apply for plans, every one of them, the one common word was failure. Failure. So I think the reason, the biggest challenge of money-back guarantee is that it failed to address the fundamental challenges with our system here at City Hall. We have a problem being able to retain employees because we don't have competitive pay. We have great people that tutor and train these great planners, and they're stars, but they get poached away by other communities that pay more. And that's a big problem. What have we done to do that? What have we done to increase cross-training so we have more people trained if someone's out sick, or we have COVID now, someone's not here? They're able to fulfill the responsibilities one person has the skill to do now. That's a fundamental problem. And I've spoken to people in the planning department, I'm very grateful, they've taken the, I'm not going to mention their names out of respect, but they've taken the time to confide in me. And from what I can understand, there's no evidence that money-back guarantee has actually helped morale. But it seems like with all the undue pressure it's created, it's actually hurt morale. Again, by not addressing the fundamental problem. You know, I'm excited that we're going to have a new mayor. I'm going to miss you, Lee. You've been a great mayor, especially getting us through this pandemic, and I thank you for that. But I think that if we eliminate money-back guarantee, we'll create a clean slate for our new mayor, who was elected to create this one Fresno, and hopefully create the kind of community where we can have great projects in northwest Fresno and southwest Fresno. And from what I've been able to observe in this last year and a half, money-back guarantee has been nothing short of a failure, a well-intentioned one, but a failure nonetheless. And the last thing I'd want to add is, again, I suspect that if I was on the council at the time this came through, I might be the lone vote, and that's sometimes the way it goes. But we are keeping our eyes on the ball. I think I encourage my colleagues to come together, work with people actually in the planning department, not necessarily developers. That's important, and I'm glad that's been done. But we tried that and it didn't work out because they were let down because of a failed policy. But the people that actually have to move through, let's see what they need. If you found out we need more competitive pay, Fresno needs to offer more competitive pay. If we need more cross-training, what can we do to increase cross-training? If we need to increase morale, what can we do to increase morale? And by the way, Director, this is not in any way, I think you're doing a great job. This is just the reality. We are the fifth-largest city in the state. It's a big department, there's a lot of projects. But we can work together to solve the problem by going after the underlying causes, not trying to be very topical and make for a good headline. It needs to be about getting stuff done at the city of Fresno. So I'm going to vote to eliminate a failed program. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. We'll go to Councilmember Brettafield.
Yes. This is not an opinion when one says that what happened last week was duplicitous. When you put on the agenda motion to reallocate $250,000 for the money-back guarantee program to fund the grocery store incentives, that's not rescinding money-back guarantee. That's duplicitous. That's not an opinion. That's a fact. When you, the week before, don't bring all of the information before the council to vote on, you may not care about that, Mr. Carvasi, but the public has a right to know all the information. And when they just have a piece of the information, and then a motion says to vote for $250,000, not to exceed $250,000, and then the motion is changed up here, not to exceed $143,000, oh, that number is the one where you don't have to go out to competitive bid? That's a corrupt process. You may be fine with that, I'm not. And I don't think the public is fine with that. So this is not opinion, Mr. Carvasi. These are facts.
Thank you, councilmember.
Mr. President, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole, so allow me to calmly address those concerns.
Thank you.
Well, it is opinion. It's your opinion, and you say you speak for the people, and I respect that. You and I are friends, we disagree on this issue, but please don't speak for me and say I don't care about this issue. Look, if you had been at the meeting, you would have been able to speak up and talk about your concerns about money-back guarantee. When that issue came before the council, we were informed by legal counsel that we, excuse me, we were informed by the planning department, there is no money for a grocery incentive program. So the motion was made at the meeting in front of everybody, let's rescind the program. I seconded that motion because before this entire meeting, I had serious concerns about the failed program called money-back guarantee. And this is from the feedback I got from the development community and folks in our planning department. No one likes the program. Now, we've corrected that because we were told by legal counsel, no, it has to be out because it's an ordinance, and we've addressed your concern. Even though we do that, you still call us deceptive even though we're out here. I would never call you corrupt. I would never, please let me finish. I would never accuse you of selling your vote, ever. Because you are a person of integrity, Gary. You served our country, and I respect you. But when you do that, it questions our friendship, and it questions the integrity of this council. That's not okay, and that really upsets me. I worked really hard after two failures to get on this council. I worked my butt off to make my case. And I promised the people of my district that I would be balanced, and I'd be fair, and I'd be a common-sense person. But when you go and tell people the council's corrupt, they think of rezone. And I get calls from people that are good supporters of mine because they're misinformed by your misinformation, and they accuse me of being a corrupt politician. I am not a corrupt politician. I worked my butt off to get here, and I worked to stop corrupt politicians. And to the public, if you ever suspect graft, please go to the DA. We have one of the best DAs in this state, and she will investigate political corruption. Do not be the boy who cried wolf. Go with your facts to the DA.
Thank you, councilmember. If you would allow me, if you would, councilmember, I just want to bring this to a close, and I do want to respond to some of the concerns you raised, councilmember. As you guys can probably recognize, we've all been burning the midnight oil, trying to get to the second series of budget hearings. Staff has been doing that, the mayor, the council members. So things have been moving pretty quickly. In the last meeting, I clearly asked you, as you informed me that you needed to leave early, what items you wanted to hear before you left. You asked me for two items. You're absolutely right that the motion on the table was about money-back guarantee and repurposing any money that we gave back. When we began to discuss the item, which is on video, and we were informed that there was no money yet, you know, potentially refunded, that we wanted to stop the program, we had to repeal it separately, that was the action. So it wasn't misleading, councilmember. It was simply the evolution of a conversation that was done out in the open. And secondly, let me address how we got here. The previous council had rejected your money-back guarantee proposal. The new council gave you the opportunity by supporting it with a very clear understanding that we would give it a year. If it worked, great. If it didn't, we would repeal it. We have been open to new ideas, open to supporting things that you, councilmember, have brought forward that previously didn't garner support. To your point, this program has been inactive since February. And I understand that the pandemic has, you know, deterred a lot of our attention. But let me just list a couple of things that have gone done by this council during the pandemic. The Responsible Neighborhood Market Act continued and got adopted. The motel cleanup that we just approved today, and the motel, you know, building and healthiest standards got approved. The multi-gen center got approved. The financing district, Veterans Boulevard, parked by the councilwoman. In addition to having two sets of budget cycles, we have all managed to, in addition to the crisis, in addition to the two budget hearings, in addition to everything else we got going on with having kids at home and online, we still maintain the ability to move our overall big ideas moving forward. I'm sorry that since February, money-back guarantee hasn't, you know, moved. I'm sorry that you have not met with staff since February. I'm sorry that you did not spend the time since February trying to improve the program, but that's not on us. Because the rest of us have been burning the midnight oil, including with the mayor and the staff, not distracting with lawsuits to the governor or baseless accusations. So this is a result of an ineffective program, and frankly, an ineffective councilmember that has been distracted by soundbites and attacks instead of doing his baseline work, which is making his program more effective during this pandemic. With that, I'll call for the question.
No, I'd like the floor, please.
You may have it.
Okay. Well, that's very clever, council president. But the fact is, in response to Mr. Carvasi, when you say it's a corrupt process, no one accused you of accepting any money. Nobody accused anybody of accepting money. It was a corrupt process. The public didn't receive all the information.
That is your opinion, that it's a corrupt process?
No, that's based on the facts.
And the council didn't receive all the opinion because you were fed opinion, the information by someone in the administration?
No, because Mr. Arias didn't present all the information.
If you would.
Okay, so that's the fact.
Councilmember.
As for the money-back guarantee, that's not simply my program. That was a program that was implemented by this council and was supposed to deal with a problem that's been going on in this city for decades. That problem will continue to go on, and so it's not my program that's being rescinded. It's a program that was designed to help move this city forward. So again, it does nothing to solve the ongoing problem. And the anti-business attitudes from this council, which was during the pandemic to shut down businesses and keep them locked down, the history is very clear from the city council, was not to help businesses. They feel very good handing out pittancees and $1,000 grants rather than allowing businesses to open. This is more of dissent. And with that.
Thank you, councilmember. With that, roll call, please.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. On a separate note, just to clarify, to get the facts out there, when it came to supporting businesses during this unprecedented pandemic, it was myself, Councilmember Soria, Councilmember Arias, who created the Save Our Small Business program, and I'm glad the council supported it. It was Councilmember Chavez and myself who created a moratorium so that tenants won't be evicted. It was this council that created a lot of efforts to mitigate the negative effect of businesses. So to say that we're not friendly to business and we don't understand the plight of small businesses and working families is factually incorrect. We did the work, and we're continuing to do the work, to protect businesses. And in fact, we recently did work to protect nonprofits. So if we're going to get the facts out there, let's really inform the public about what's really been going on and not give our version. So when I say facts versus opinion, we can present facts in whatever order we want, but are we being honest with the public? And that was a very dishonest statement. I'm sorry, but it was. And I hope you don't consider the word dishonest incendiary, because the fact is, we have taken steps left and right to help businesses. It's not about going to a press conference and saying, I support you. It's about getting the dollars out to support Main Street businesses.
Thank you. Let's go to a roll call, councilmember.
No, I'd like the floor in response.
Can I make a motion to cease debate? I am ready to move forward.
There's a point of order?
No, I get the floor.
Is there a second for the point of order to go to the roll call?
I get the floor.
There's a second?
City attorney? I would like to speak and respond.
There's a point of order motion for the roll call?
Point of order is not about being able to speak. We should all be able to speak until it's done.
City attorney, can you advise us? Can we take on the point of order first?
First of all, the council president is in charge of the meeting, is in charge of recognizing who is speaking. That is always the case unless somebody would bring a point of order to overrule by majority vote the council president. Everybody should be entitled to speak, but that doesn't mean unlimited times. There is no procedure for a call to question or limit debate. But the council president has the authority to create a rule as the proceedings go on, so it is possible for the council president to recognize that motion.
But that's a rule following this discussion. It doesn't happen in the middle of what we're doing.
The council would have to approve that rule, yes.
So, Councilmember Brettafield, at this time, I'm not recognizing for further debate?
No, he didn't tell you that he's allowed to do that. The debate has to continue.
What I had said is that if a council member has the floor, the council president cannot take the floor from the other council member.
So at this point, I recognize Councilmember Carvasi, he's given up the floor. Now let's go to a roll call on the item.
City attorney, do I not have the ability to speak or not?
You have had the ability to speak. Every council member has the right to speak, but not necessarily unlimited times.
When you say unlimited times?
That is up to the council president.
Thank you, council. I think we've debated this issue. Let's go to a roll call, please.
Councilmember Brettafield?
No.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparsa?
Aye.
Councilmember Carvasi?
Yes.
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Council Vice President Caprillia?
Yes.
And President Arias?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is pulled by Member Carvasi, item 1E as in Edward. It's the proposal to purchase fixtures for the Parks and Rec Department and community centers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, so now that we've calmed down. So I have a couple of questions about this project. I've been looking into UV light technologies, and there's a lot of things that we can do to mitigate as we move forward the spread of COVID. Air circulation's one of the ones we've heard about. But I have some concerns about whether or not UVC light is effective on viruses. The verdict's kind of out. I know that the vendor claims that, but when you go to the manufacturer's website to make the technology, they won't actually accept that claim, that it actually kills bacteria. It kills bacteria. Well, established that it kills the virus. It kills bacteria well established that it kills the virus. There's evidence it kills SARS, not necessarily the coronavirus. But having said that, I'm concerned about whether or not we'll be reimbursed if we make this expense. The safest thing we can do right now is if we're going to spend some of our CARES Act dollars to prevent the spread of the COVID virus, if we tie it to public safety like the fire department, those fire stations are staffed 24 hours a day. They're city employees. They're not closed during the pandemic. It might be appropriate if we just allocate the money just for that function because staff infections, which are a bacteria, are always a concern like of hospitals and fire stations. So I was wondering if the administration has any thoughts about what that dollar amount was and if we just amend this to focus solely on the fire department? Because I'm also worried about the limited dollars we have. There's a lot of proposals we're getting. We met with a lot of our youth last night and we may want to spend some of our CARES dollars that's left to mitigate the negative impact on our youth.
Councilmember, you are correct in your assessment of the technology. I'm not an epidemiologist or a biologist, but I will say, based on historical information regarding UV light killing microorganisms, there is evidence that it kills viruses. The coronavirus that we're talking about here is too new to make those precise assumptions. And but it, it does lend itself that the UV light, UVC in particular kills viruses similar to coronavirus, this strain, that it would kill this strain or be effective in deactivating the virus. As a side note, we are working with our partners at Fresno State to look at how similar technology would inactivate the virus on our buses. I think Fresno County Rural Transit has been involved in that as well. And the results through Ali Tafik's efforts out at Fresno State have been positive so far. We will continue to do that analysis. Now, as far as how effective it is in specific environments, I think that is the wild card. And that is dependent upon a bunch of different factors in my mind. And one would be the moving in and out of staff or people from a facility. As you might imagine, buses have quite a turnover. Facilities have less turnover typically. How enclosed the area is, what the air circulation or turnover of areas, the length of time the individual is exposed, the contact with others outside of the facility, and then the length of time the facility is open. So if I were to assess, and this may not be the same priority as others, I would say, based on those factors, the fire department, the fire stations would be the highest priority, followed by police stations. And I rank parks lower simply because if we have a COVID outbreak or resurgent, those will likely be closed anyway. And then I would rank city hall lower as well since we would typically limit access to that facility as well. So that's my opinion. I think it's a council policy decision beyond that.
Okay, now I know there was a concern about time sensitive. I think there's a couple of other items coming up on the next agenda regarding this issue. I'd like to make a motion to continue this to the next meeting.
I'll second that motion. All right, council.
Council president, just can I make some comments and ask some questions, please? Just for city staff, so is there a time, timing issue? Because I thought last time you guys had mentioned if we didn't approve it now, it would be challenging to purchase whatever.
That is correct. The lead time on the equipment is such that we need to make a decision. And Scott can speak more to that if you did have to.
What is the timing of it? How tight? Because I know that we.
My understanding is that the next council meeting would be sufficient time for the equipment to be purchased and installed. Is that correct?
Good morning, council, council president, council member Scott Moser, Public Works Department. We would, we and the proposed vendor would strive for that completion. As each day passes, we cannot guarantee that with 100% certainty due to the CARES Act requirement that the item be received and delivered by the December 30th deadline. So there's a very, very strong probability that we would be okay with a November 5th item. But I just want to put that out there that there is some risk to the city of not being able to complete.
To complete as complete the purchase or complete the project? Because my understanding of the federal CARES Act is that you need to expend the dollars for, you know, whatever COVID-related expenses you have by the time. So would we be prohibited from making the, making the purchase and then installing as we go, even though it's beyond the December 31st deadline?
And yes, council, from a budgetary perspective, if the item were received but not able to be installed in time, let's assume that Congress does not provide any extensions to December 30th. That's of course an item being discussed in Washington DC right now. If that were the case, then yes, the receipt of the item purchase would be CARES eligible. But the city would then potentially have to come up with other funding other than CARES for the installation, which would be a difficult prospect.
Do we know what the breakdown between materials and the installation costs are, Scott?
I believe, I believe that's about two thirds on the product and about one third on the install.
Okay. And my next question or maybe more of a comment, so you're okay, Scott? So the only concern that I have with changing priority, and I think that as we, as this council considers how we move forward and a number of the comments that we're receiving, given what is happening in the community, I believe community centers are still a very important piece of an asset in this moment, especially for young people. And as we're seeing our crime increase, if we're going to be providing outlets for individuals that they're safe and if that there is the technology, hopefully that could, you know, mitigate any spread, that we seriously consider that. So I just want to make sure that we don't put them again at the bottom of the totem pole just because we feel like parks are maybe not number one priority.
As I mentioned earlier, that's a policy call that council needs to make.
Thank you. So it looks like we have a motion on table. There's no further debate from the council. Let's do roll call, please.
President, one more point. Actually, you made a really good point. I want to ask a follow-up question. If this is a policy call, let me explain my reasoning. So if we're talking about, there's the city hall, there's Parks Department, all the community centers, which are absolutely important, councilmember Soria is right. There's fire and there's PD. So my reasoning is, I have two concerns. One, we're running out of CARES dollars and there's a lot of need out there. Number two is if we're prioritizing, a lot of our community centers are closed right now. Hopefully they'll open up very soon, but our fire stations are lived in and they're staffed 24 hours a day. The stations, police stations are staffed 24 hours a day. So that's why I put fire at the top. It's just trying to be objective and make a balanced decision. Does the, does the administration have an opinion on that about?
I, I, I thought I had already given my opinion and based on the factors I had mentioned. Our, and Scott, do not feel free to disagree with me, but my opinion would be fire, PD, parks, then city hall.
Okay. Now maybe to councilmember Soria's point, maybe we would change that. It's a policy call, fire, parks, PD, and maybe we'll do that. But are, what is the dollar amount for fire?
I think it's about 700,000. Is that correct, Scott?
Actually, the dollar amount for fire would be 916,675.
So close to what we were talking about today?
Yes, a little bit less than we were talking today.
Would it be amenable to the council? I'm going to throw this out there, see how you feel. Rather than table this to approve that portion and start with that priority and get the ball rolling for the firehouses?
Councilmember, the only thing I would caution us with is we're about to hear the budget and I don't know whether this money is considered in the budget as, you know, we have to balance it.
Okay, let's just hold off.
I would just ask that we do it next week and we're going to re-debate the merits, the prioritization. But let's, let's get to the budget and make sure we're, we don't double spend the limited money that we have. All right, well, let's do roll call to table the item for next week.
Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Yes.
Councilmember Soria? Council vice president Capriolio?
Yes.
President Arias?
Yes. All right, council, that takes us to the last item on the agenda, which is the final amendment to the budget. With this item, council, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the mayor's proposed revised budget as amended by exhibit A, plus the council motions not replaced by exhibit A. For the public, it's seconded by member Soria. For the public, these should be exhibit A, which lists any of the motions that were amended or new motions to balance the budget. Now that we have a first and a second, I'm going to go out to the public for any comments on the budget before I return to the dais for comments from the mayor and the council. Any member of the public wishing to address the final amended budget? Brandy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to, I'm just seeing the attachments, so I will be reviewing those. But I did want to ask, because continuing on with issues pertaining budget as regards to those who are homeless. At the police hearing, the police budget hearing, I didn't have a chance to finish my comments and I sent some in. But one thing I want to note that is regarding concerns regarding defunding and whatnot is that there is a significant, or calls for reform, is that there's, there needs to be a significant public recognition of the hurting community that is bringing up injustice issues and for those to be addressed. I, and I hope that both the police department and the city will, not only now in looking at the commission, police reforms, recommendations, but continuously look and take those seriously. At that meeting, Hall mentioned that they could do better with the homeless and other issues. But we've been asking for changes for years regarding the treatment of those who are unhoused. And there are a lot of justices that we have heard people vocalize that have been in those surveys and that we have seen with those who are marginalized, including those who are unhoused, that have not had a sufficient, felt like they have a voice and have not seen any changes in tangible ways in actions and budgets. And I ask that those be in the police budget and in any other areas where they're affected, that that be reflected in the budget and in what is done with the budget. And while I'm here, I would mention that I do also take issue with any, I mean, any credit taken by the city or the police department regarding the, our protests regarding this because that is the people in our community who have chosen to protest that way. So I know that you've reviewed the recommendations of the commission and I hope that you take seriously the voice of those in the community and the findings both in these things and the amendments made in the budget and in continued work looking at the, what the community is saying regarding use of our budget funds. Thank you.
Lisa, you have the floor.
First off, two things. I need to know about the money for the dog park to move it. I would hope that there was inclusion of a direction, of a directive to park staff to actually deal with the organizations that actually have organized dog playgroups as to where the dog park is going to be moved. And also too, Miguel, did you receive my email regarding the truck route study? And my ask for providing directions to staff of what the RFP should include?
Yes, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Next person is Kaylee or Ivanka, whichever one.
Hello, this is Ivanka Saunders with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. First off, I just appreciate and thank you all for working so hard on this budget and really holding up the requests and asks of community members to make Fresno whole from north to south for the parks, for housing, for infrastructure, especially with the truck reroute study. This is something that has been a long time coming. Thank you for listening to the youth. And as we move forward, we need to make sure that this budget is, not only is it balanced, but as we continue to move forward, that the funds are truly spent according to how the community has asked for. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, council, I'll bring it back. And before I go to the mayor, I do want to say some thank yous to my council peers and the mayor and his staff for, again, burning the midnight oil these past few weeks to adopt a budget that maintains the emergency reserve, does not result in any layoffs during this unprecedented pandemic. But most importantly, the budget invests a historic record of up to $40 million to house the homeless. It directs the hiring of 42 firefighters and invests more than $10 million in our Parks Department, the most resources in those areas in more than a decade. But most sobering and difficult for me in this 2020 has been the experience that we had last night with the youth and the residents of our city. See, we, we brought them forward and thank you to the councilmembers who attended that community meeting. We asked the residents and the youth of this city to tell us what the solutions are to prevent the increase in crime. And it was sobering. It was difficult and quite frankly shameful for me to hear their solutions. See, they weren't requests for grand, you know, millions of dollars. They were basic. For example, they asked us that since we closed our parks, that we hire them to at least pick up the garbage because at least that gives them something to do. Unlike other folks that come into this chamber asking for bonuses, incentives, waivers, pension increases, these kids were asking for the basics. Our youth should expect more from us, but because of the neglect for decades, they've been forced to ask for the bare minimum. Last night was just one more reminder that this city for decades has been pushing the agenda of defunding our youth and they've done it successfully. Now, we can blame the recession, but then we had an economic upswing and we still didn't invest in our youth. We invested in the adults. All appropriate investments, all necessary, but we ignored the youth. The same kids and the same residents who we, we asked to give us solutions to reduce the crime are the same people whose households have lost jobs, have lost their education, have lost family members to the pandemic. We asked them to give us solutions to how effectively do our jobs and reduce crime. And their solutions were simple. The same things that we've been taking away from them for 20 years to give back to them. And although I'm proud of the work that we've done here to present a balanced budget that doesn't result in layoffs, that protects a reserve, that adds fire services, more parks money, I'm also extremely ashamed that we've ignored the youth of this city for so long. You know, when you ask the community to tell you the solutions and they simply just have to put a mirror to your face to remind you that it was us who did this, it's a very difficult, it's a very difficult consequence in reality that you got to deal with. For the past few months, I've ignored my own kids trying to manage and mitigate all the demands that adults in this city want. Trees trimmed, roads fixed, salary increases. And yet last night was just a reminder that this city has ignored its own kids for far too long. So thank you for the time that my council colleagues spent hearing directly from the kids. Thank you for the media who didn't impose on the confidentiality, allowing them to speak freely. And this is a. And this is a beginning of us having to right a historical wrong. And I would just close by saying, for all those interest groups, for all those adults who will come to us in the next few months asking for more, I'm going to ask you the simple question, how does that help our kids? When is it their turn? Because it's pretty simple. We either give kids things, something to do, or the gangs will give them something to do. And the police chief has made it very clear, he doesn't have a policing solution to this. You can't arrest your way out of this increase in crime, and we got to stop executing the defund agenda of our youth in our city. It's gone for too long. And mayor, thank you for coming forward and working with us through all these difficulties. It's going to be difficult to see you go because we may not agree in political ideologies, but I can tell you and attest that Mayor Lee Brand never put his interests or the interests of adults first. He was looking out for the whole city, and it's that kind of effort that allowed us to find a compromise that gives us the budget that we're proposing today. With that, I'll turn over to Mayor Brand and then to the rest of the council.
Thank you, council president. This is my 12th and final budget, and I can say for all of us here and across the state and across the country, this has been the year from hell, from a pandemic that has devastated this country, economic calamity, racial strife, wildfires, brownouts, closed schools. Through all this, this council rose to the occasion to work together, to give the public assurance that we all have their best needs in front of us. And I want to thank a lot of people, starting with our city manager, her staff, my chief of staff, Tim Warman, and especially Henry Fierro, I'm calling the translator from counting to real world language, and you do it so well, Henry. There's a lot of people here that have done an exceptional job. And I want to thank our council president for this past year, just leading up to this point in budget where we have taken very diverse opinions and priorities and found a way to address all those in our own responsible way, that everybody has a voice and we're trying to work together. I want to thank the council subcommittee of councilmembers Chavez, Soria, and Arias for their work with my chief of staff, my city manager, and Henry on crafting a fair, balanced budget. And we have, as you said, mentioned earlier, we have had no furloughs, no layoffs, service levels continue to be the same, our reserves intact at roughly $35 million. We have a fully funded pension system. In short, the city of Fresno is probably one of the best shaped financially of any large city in California. Most cities are looking at substantial budget reductions and cuts back in service, and we hope that we will get additional money from the federal government. We won't know that until probably after the election, but this whole budget was based on the premise of no further money, and we have found a way to balance that. Been my pleasure over the last 12 years as the city councilman and as the mayor the last four years to be here. Again, I want to mostly thank the citizens of Fresno for their incredible resiliency to take on the challenges of a lifetime that's still affecting all of us, our lifestyle, and I hope and pray that we find an end to the pandemic and move back to state normalcy. And it'll be probably the most difficult year in my life, too, to come through here, and it's a privilege, privilege to me to work with this council. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. We'll go to councilmember Chavez and Mr. Sparza.
Thank you, president. I want to also thank the young people that showed up in the organizations yesterday evening. I think that was probably one of the most honest, at times uncomfortable conversations that we have had behind, you know, closed doors, away from the cameras. I think it's when you get the most genuine, sincere responses from our kids. And council president was right, they didn't ask for, you know, bells and whistles and everything under the stars. There was basic city services that we used to provide, and they were very encouraged, and I was happy that the incoming mayor was there too to share, you know, some of his plans on what he's planning for our young people. And I said this last night, one of the most hardest conversations was having to speak to a mother that had lost her family members and the senseless violence that has been going on in our community. But I was very encouraged last night. I think last night was the first step in a long multitude of conversations that we will have as a city, and obviously policies will come out of that, and we will debate them and vote and really try to, you know, improve the lives of our residents, from our young folks to our seniors. But I also want to echo some of the sentiments that outgoing mayor Lee Brand mentioned. This has been one of the toughest years that this city has gone through, from businesses to churches, to nonprofits, to organizations. I've never seen anything like this. And in March, if you all recall, when we went through the first emergency declaration, none of us knew what was in store, but I think from this process, we've learned so much from our city, and the main thing that I've taken away is just the resiliency of our community. You know, the definition of what an essential worker is has never been more true, based on the neighborhoods that I represent. And, you know, I've been up at 5:00 in the morning, I see the vans going through, whether it's to our fields, to our packing houses, to our food processing plants. They didn't have an option to zoom into work like many of us do. And every little bit that we did, we did it with that in mind. You know, I'm very proud of what this council and this mayor has done with regards to rental housing assistance, with regards to food assistance programs, to helping our small businesses. And even in the midst of the pandemic and the challenges that we face, we've shown that when we work together, we can absolutely improve the lives of our residents. Next year, and I always say this at the end of the year, I didn't know how true it would be, so this year, where I said next year will be epic, this year was epic, not in the way that, you know, I intended, but I'm going to say this, that next year will be epic, because I think that's when the rebuilding of our community, from grassroots organizations to all the great folks that are doing work in our community, we're really have that opportunity to rebuild what our city looks like. And focusing on that resiliency component, that's what I saw last night, that even though we have a pandemic, even though the economy's not great, you still have people, young people that are optimistic about what our city is, but more importantly, what our city can become. And, you know, mayor, you and I have been friends for many years. I want to thank you. This will be your last budget, but I've always had a lot of respect for you, from you writing the 13th Lee Brand commandments of City Hall and, you know, really building the foundation of what fiscal responsibility is and good government and good management. I just wanted to publicly thank you for the work, and I want to thank your team too, from, you know, your city manager, Wilma, to, you know, Jim, to Aldi. It's been tough. It's been tough conversations in the back, and sometimes out on the dais, but I wanted to publicly thank you for your professionalism, for your work ethic, and for really keeping the city pushing forward. So with that, I yield my time back, council president.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparza.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm pretty proud, very proud of the budget that we're passing today. It's the second budget we've done since I've come into City Hall, third if you count the one that we did this past summer. And I, what I'm most proud of is just that it certainly has our stamp on it. It's far from what the status quo has been. You know, we continue to move in a positive direction of reinvesting in community, as we've sort of heard the echoes from my colleagues. I think that as we move forward in the next several fiscal years, and, you know, things potentially become more crunched than they were or are this year, right? That'll be an even truer test of, you know, our values and how we prioritize, you know, our very limited budget. So again, very proud to vote yes on this budget today. You know, it was also a very, very productive time yesterday. I wouldn't call yesterday's a meeting as much as it was kind of a workshop, but just the having the opportunity to listen and again, hear and have those voices reinforced in our community that are pushing us more towards a budget that invests in our future. And so I think, again, just like last year's budget, this year's budget does that even more so, and again, we'll look forward to that in the coming fiscal years. And I'm not going to, mayor, I'll save my remarks for when you're actually leaving. You know, the mayor, he's not dead, he's just, he's going, he's going home, right? We'll see him at Save Mart still. So I'll save those remarks for January or so, when you're, when you really hit it out the door. But it has been a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you, council. Any comments, councilwoman?
Thank you, council president. I do want to echo a couple of the remarks that have already been made. This is now my sixth budget. Time really has flown by. I do want to thank the mayor for the work that we did over the last few months and since just the pandemic and negotiating and making sure that we invest directly into the community. I will say that I am extremely proud of the work that we have done. For me, I'm not satisfied because I know that we can do more, but, you know, I also recognize the need for compromise and the need to move forward. Just to kind of go back into memory lane, when I first came on board in 2015, we weren't doing too bad then. We were in a recovery mode, but I could probably say comparison to now, we were, we were doing fine. And I still remember one of my first press conferences that I had at Quigley Park, which to today's age is still under the park's master plan, ranked as the number one park with the greatest need in terms of getting it fixed because of lack of disinvestment that has happened. It's still number one, and we still have some work to do. But I remember having a press conference with young people, with building healthy communities, just to ask for a mere $1 million to address the deferred maintenance, not just for Quigley Park, but for parks across our city. Guess what? We didn't get that million dollars. At that time, the administration didn't think it was the best investment. However, at the same time, it was that administration that convinced this council, and I was strongly opposed to it initially, to put the repayment from the RDA, and if you guys know what RDA is, RDA was monies that we were collecting as a result of the poverty in our community. Well, lo and behold, five years later, we have built a reserve, what I like to say, a reserve on the backs of poor people. And what, what many of us may claim that it is great, right? It is great that we have built a reserve of $35 million so that when we're facing crisis like the crisis that we have today, if it's a financial crisis, not only are we facing, you know, maybe some hard times in the coming months and the coming year, depending on what happens in Washington, but we have to recognize as a community that we have a crisis today happening in our city. Kids are killing kids. Kids are being shot and murdered in our community. And yes, we can be proud of, you know, the investments that we've made. I've gone from asking $1 million that I didn't get five, six years ago, close to six years ago, to today seeing an additional $10 million invested because this council was pretty committed to making sure that we saw additional investments. We went from that $1 million to asking for the creation of a youth commission, which happened in 2016, with asking for a mere drop in the bucket of $25,000 to make jobs a reality in the city of Fresno, to today having about $300,000 allocated in the budget because we've gone some leveraged funds from the workforce investment board. The fact of the matter is that the infrastructure within City Hall hasn't prioritized that. I will say that the council has done a tremendous job. If you, any day of the week, go to the back council offices, you can see a number of interns running around in our office trying to learn the ropes around City Hall. So I'm proud of that work, but there's a lot of work to be done. I'm also proud of the work, as councilmember Chavez mentioned, of the work and the investments that we have made over the last few months to invest directly into the people, into the people that actually pay taxes, and we then get to decide where those investments go. We've invested over $6 million in food relief, $6 million for testing to ensure that those most vulnerable to the pandemic and to coronavirus have the ability to get a free test because we know that many in our communities don't have access to healthcare. We've invested $5 million for housing and retention grants to ensure that people stay in their homes and don't experience homelessness. We've invested over $8 million or close to $8 million for our small businesses to ensure that our small businesses can survive during this pandemic. We've invested in nonprofits, and the list goes on, and I'm very proud of that, very proud that because of the federal relief that we got, we were able to directly impact families in our community. I'm also proud that in the next probably four or five months, we will open our first neighborhood senior center. I want to thank my colleagues for supporting the motion to provide essentially the monies to refurnish or furnish that neighborhood senior center on McKinley and Blackstone. And I'm also proud of the significant investments that we're making in infrastructure, so communities like Highway City, who for decades and decades haven't had sidewalks and gutters and streetlights, and just the basic infrastructure that allows kids to walk safely to school, will soon have those amenities in their neighborhoods. Many times, the amenities that you and I, that are privileged, don't think about because we live in a nice neighborhood, because we don't have to think about the lack of resources. And that's why I'm proud to be able to vote on this budget, because while it may not be a perfect budget, and while there is still a lot of work to be done for the kids of our community, which is the future of our city, that we can say that today we've made some tremendous amount of progress from the first year to my, you know, now sixth year being on the council, to say that we're investing. But what I do want to say and, you know, a message to the incoming administration, to who will be our future mayor, mayor-elect Dyer, is that we have a lot of work to do when it comes to our kids, and that while we have decided not to touch our reserves for the last five years, that when we're facing crisis of kids continuing to kill each other, we really have to think long and hard, what if those were really your kids or our kids? And these kids are our kids because they live in our neighborhoods and they live in our city, so we have a responsibility. And if it wouldn't be for investments in programs like the ones that I named with jobs and so forth, I wouldn't be here today. I share with many folks that my first paying job was to work for the city of Lindsay in the Public Works Department, making copies and answering phone calls. That was my first paid gig, and that made me and put me on a pathway to do what I do today. And that's what these kids want. These kids want an opportunity. They want a hand up. They don't want a handout. They want adults to believe in them so that they can have an opportunity to succeed in our city. With that, I am happy to support the negotiated budget and look forward to the work that we have ahead to ensure that we truly prioritize our kids.
Councilmember Krevasi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just real quick about last night, it was a great event. I thank my colleagues for putting it on and for most of the council being there, and mayor-elect Jerry Dyer was there as well. You know, the youth, and it's interesting, in the beginning, they were very reluctant to speak, and then we created these little group circles, and then once the ideas started flowing, the really quiet ones started finally realizing they have a chance to speak, and they started sharing what they really wanted, and they pretty much poured their hearts out. And what you'd notice is all the groups actually kind of started saying the same thing. There was a lot of overlap. One of the things that stood out to me the most were, they talked about youth jobs, but also making sure that employers understand that sometimes kids face problems at home or they don't have the resume skills or the understanding. I mean, it may sound silly to us, but we had that training in school. They may not know, for example, that, you know, you have to call in or you have to do these things, and how to help those kids transition as they get those jobs and give them the real skills they need. Or their issue about housing security, not being afraid to go home and face domestic violence, and not being afraid to go home and knowing that you have a place that's clean and safe where you can live, because a lot of them do have that anxiety. Meanwhile, they're still kids, they're growing up, they're going to school and facing all the problems a normal teenager faces, but on top of that, they're facing real healthcare and insecurity on their housing situation, housing insecurity. and, uh, and insecurity on their housing situation, housing insecurity. Um, and the other issue that really struck out to me was, they kept saying, we want more counselors in our schools, we want more socioeconomic support. What I'm concerned about is I think that we have kind of failed them, although this council's very dedicated to fixing that problem. As a society, we failed them by saying, you have to choose between a safe school and a school with more nurses and school psychologists, and that's not okay. We keep approving all this state funding for our schools. Well, we need to make sure it's spent to have a balanced approach so kids can go to school and not worry, be worried about their safety, but not being also worried about whether or not they have someone they can confide into and talk to about the problems they face at home. And I'm eager for us to open our schools safely, uh, as soon as we can. Um, about Mayor Brand, I did mention it a little bit before, Lee, I really appreciate your support, it's meant a lot to me as I've been a new councilman, and especially when it comes to financial matters. I mean, I thought I, I, I knew business, you really do understand the fundamentals, and you have left Fresno in a much better spot financially than when you came here. Um, the fact that we, and we're gonna debate about this next year, I suspect, but our reserves, when we didn't have anything, we had the last recession, the fact that we don't, we have a pension system that's balanced, these are very, very big steps other cities in the state don't have. And you know what? It's not about Democrat or Republican, we may have opposite parties, but we have similar values and we work together and we're flexible, and that's how you get things done. And Lee, I'm very, I'm gonna miss you. We still have a couple months to go, how many days cap do we have left?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one days. But we're gonna, we're gonna hit a couple of home runs before it's over, and I look forward to working with you and your administration.
All right, Mr. Seventy-one, you have the floor.
Oh, thanks, uh, Council President. The, uh, last night was a very informative summit, I wanted to thank, uh, everyone that showed up, all the young people and the adults, and everyone had a pretty open mind, and, uh, the charrettes that were posted and the things that were added as I walked through each group, uh, had a lot of common threads, and we've noted those. And we're gonna incorporate that in the future when we address the needs of the community and especially the youth. As usual with my brevity comments, I wanted to thank, uh, all those that have touched the budget. And the list would go on for an hour probably, but you all know who you are, you are fantastic. This is a very difficult, difficult year, uh, but you've achieved the goal, which is a balanced budget, so thank you for that. Last, I want to thank all those that have touched, uh, my projects. They're ongoing, we're working really, really hard, and I thank them for their support and continued efforts, uh, to make District Four and the city of Fresno the city that it will be and has always been, the greatest city in California, if not the states. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Councilmember Brediffel.
Yeah, just had a question for Fire Chief.
Fire Chief, can you come up to the podium, please?
Yeah, Gary, I just want to follow up just on the SAFER grants, I mean, this was a bit, big deal for many of us. So, where the status of this and hiring the firefighters and...
Uh, the status of a SAFER grant is it should open sometime in February, March, I'm sorry, January to March. Uh, it's usually a 30-day opening, and then awards start probably two to three months after that.
Okay, and so you're moving forward with that, that's...
Our intention is to follow the budget, and if it says move forward with applying for 42, that's what we'll do.
Okay, and, uh, okay, appreciate it, I just wanted to make sure about that. And then the other thing with the $5 million for parks, I mean, that's a huge amount of money. Woodward Park, uh, clearly is in tremendous need of irrigation, it's been ongoing for I don't know how many years, uh, and that's a regional park, um, it's used by everybody in everyone's district, so I hope that those funds are utilized in that way to improve Woodward Park, because obviously it needs a tremendous amount of work. Is there anything that you want to add about, about Woodward Park, I mean, we've talked about it, or needs or anything?
No, I agree with you, Gary, we talked the other night, and I believe that our regional parks both need, um, new irrigation systems, and I, you know, I know the Parks Department will be coming before council to figure out how to spend all of those millions of dollars that you're allocating.
Okay, thank you.
Every park, every one of our parks have needs, as you know.
Yeah, of course. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Karbasi, you have the last word for 30 seconds, keep your promise.
All right. Um, regarding the SAFER program, Chief, I want to thank you, that was actually my bill to make sure that we, and I appreciate the support of my colleagues, because it's really important that in a fifth largest city in California, sixth largest by area, we have enough firefighters and you've been, well, the department, previous chiefs have been asking for this for a long time, but I also appreciate, I gotta give a shout out to the city manager, because we sat down, we worked this out, and we found a way, we are going to automatically apply, and then we're going to see, I think, what's the magic number? Of a firefighter?
Forty-two.
Forty-two firefighters, and that's gonna make a real difference for minimum daily staffing. So, thank you, Chief, for all your help with that, and I'm very proud of the SAFER bill that we were able to pass.
All right, council, thank you for your comments, thank you for the burning the midnight oil for multiple weeks in a row and doing it a second time this year. And for the record, I'm officially gonna pass a baton on the next revision of this budget to, uh, Councilmember Chavez, so all the harassment emails and text messages and the, I want more raises and pension benefits can all go to him. All right, let's go to roll call, please.
Councilmember Brediffel?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Karbasi?
Aye.
Councilmember Soria? Council Vice President Capriolio?
Yes.
President Arias?
Yes. Mayor Brand, you officially have your final budget. Thank you. That concludes our meeting today. We'll see you guys next Thursday, 9:00 AM.